Good, being 6:30, I am going to call meeting number 1,630 to order.
Chair, I move that we move into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining. With SB REA Unit D as an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the committee's bargaining position. As declared by the chair and the committee, we will return into open session.
Second.
Second from Dennis. And I'll take a roll call vote to go into an executive session. Art?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Laura?
She's on.
Dennis?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Kara?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Jane? Yes, and for the note taker, we are hoping to have this be done in 15 minutes. So we expect to reconvene in open session at 6:45. I think I'm going to reopen the meeting. Meeting number 1,630. We're going to go ahead because we have a forum to. Hello. Okay, so.
I motion to approve the minutes for June 2nd, 2022.
And second, and I have been correction.
Yeah, okay, so. And Bonnie, go ahead Bonnie.
My correction is under enrollment. We have, it's 631 students, not 361 students. The second page.
To be.
To be or not to be.
It's a good catch there Bonnie.
Yeah, and I have another correction, which in the student spotlight is the second sentence is she explained the exhibit at the library was created last year by the Sheffield Historical Society. That was not the case, it was part of a grant that she received. And it was posted by the Sheffield Historical Society. So. So I think.
So that's your correction.
That's my correction. Any other corrections?
I think it's important to point out that the grant that she got and that it would travel to other schools and districts.
Yes, yes.
It says first. It says that.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, it was first shown.
It said it was a travel.
And then wait a second, and the society implemented a program for students with funding from the Stars Refency. That is not correct, that is, Ms. Graham and Mount Everett High School got funding from the Stars Refency grant. All right. Any other changes to people?
Yeah, and buildings and grants. And 14E, it's Solax Energy, not select.
Solax.
It's an S O L E.
Nice.
It's not slant, it's.
Is the actual name, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, very good.
So there's two references of it.
Yeah.
Three references to.
Everywhere it is.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. All right. So we registered both to approve the minutes as amended. Art?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Kara?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Yes, for Jane, okay. We are going on, we will not have a student spotlight or.
Any miscellaneous?
I didn't see any. There was a letter that I got this morning. It was addressed to all the whole school committee and to Beth regarding the outstanding treatment that a child in the sixth grade received this year. And I'll make sure that that gets forwarded to everybody because it's, it's it's very wonderful and I want to. Somebody takes the time to write it, be a very long explanation of how carefully this young girl was helped and how appreciative this grandmother actually, the parent.
Parent.
The parent was, yeah. So.
So you'll share that.
I will share that.
And they also sent it to Commissioner Riley, so.
Oh, very nice.
I thought that was really, really lovely.
Yeah, yeah, but it was too late to put it in the pack. All right, so public comment. Have a few possible people that might want to speak.
No. No.
And then no hands up, so.
It's business office and Sandy's in and the meditator something.
Oh, okay, so.
So we're up to Chris.
Now we are up to our end of year. We're ready.
Okay, so I have a number of items for you tonight. The first, I guess, would be the approval of the warrants. We have a few warrants on the warrant report for your approval. Really nothing out of the ordinary with these warrants. The first couple, 1702 and 1802, there are a number of out of district sped tuition warrants, our payments in there, transportation of about $150,000. And, you know, it's just really, again, what you pretty much see every month. The same with the number 1803, transportation bill was in there. The payroll warrant is, again, just it's one of the, one of the final payrolls of the year, although with, with a lot of the staff, it goes right throughout the summer. So it's the kind of, kind of the final payroll of this year, but not, it'll continue throughout the summer. And then just a P card warrant is, you know, a very small one, just again, those are items that are kind of needed quickly so people use the district credit card and purchase them so that we can get the items quickly. I don't know if anyone has any questions on these.
Move to approve the warrants for June 23rd, 2022.
Second.
Second from Dennis, questions before we vote? Like, I'm not seeing any questions. So we'll have a roll call vote on that. Art?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Kara?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Jane, yeah, so the warrant happens, thank you. Now we're looking at end of year budget transfers.
Yeah, so we've only had one budget transfer so far this year. Way back, I think it was, you know, before the, before New Year's. And it was a one-page thing, pretty small. This one is much more substantial, but, you know, it's kind of a typical thing every year. We and every other school district quite honestly have to go through and just kind of true up all of the accounts. There are many accounts that are over budget throughout the year for various reasons. You know, new people coming in, old people leaving, and their salaries are different. There's also a lot of accounts that are under budget for the same types of reasons. In some cases, some of these accounts were under budget because we've had grants that were available that we were able to get and, and spent the, the grant money instead of the regular budget money. So that kind of freed up the money to help to offset some of the budget overages. So there are a number of transfers in here. We were just looking to get these taken care of before the end of the year just so we can again have, have a cleaner budget. It doesn't affect the bottom line if you were to add all of the tos and frums. Only because I checked it myself, you'd end up with zero at the end, so, and, and we do. So it has no effect on the bottom line, just kind of cleaning up the, the whole budget.
Chair, I move to approve the budget transfers dated June 16th, 2022.
Second.
Second from Art, okay.
Is there anything, you know, out of the ordinary that we should be looking at?
No, I, I went through these, you know, we started last week, I went through them again today just to kind of double check on things. Nothing out of the ordinary, I can explain it as well in the expense report that I have coming up. But the only one that, that might appear funny is the school choice tuition, which is not, it's, it's toward the end of the report, it was about $48,000. That's not necessarily an overage, we don't actually pay that. But we, you know, we budget really based on not much information other than what we had last year. This year, the school choice out was a little bit higher than last year. And so it's showing up as over budget, it wasn't actually an expense, but we just trued up that account as well. Other than that, no, they're all just, you know, basically your typical overs and unders that you experience after 12 months of, you know, purchases and paying bills. Some items, you know, such as energy type of items, we've experienced increases in the cost with those. So, you know, again, I do three districts, we've had those overages in every one of my districts, and I'm sure it's pretty much state and nationwide, but, you know, again, not a problem whatsoever as long as we are able to offset those expenses, and we are.
And Chair, I move we approve the.
We already do.
Now I'm just going to take the vote if we've finished with the discussion. Which I think we have, Art?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Kara?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
And Jane, yeah, okay, and finally, we have what I would be operate, if this isn't something we need to vote on, this is just for our information.
Right.
The operational expenses as of May 31st.
Sure, so this report, it, it looks a little different than what's actually going to happen, but as of May 31st, this is where we stood. It shows $2.6 million remaining. And while that may be true, there were the payrolls in June and then the payrolls that go on throughout the summer, an additional four payrolls typically. And so that 2.6 million is going to, you know, severely drop, much lower than that. If you look toward the bottom of the page, I think it's, it's four items up the tuition expense. That was that school choice one that I was talking about. And so that, as of May 31st, is showing up over budget, obviously with these transfers you just approved, that will again be down to 100% even. The capital, it shows that we've had zero expenses and there's zero budget remaining, which might look a little bit funny. But what happens is the capital is placed in the budget. And then once the year starts, we move it out into the capital account. So it's included on this report just so we could actually make the budget balance with what the actual budget is. But the end result is that those, those funds get moved into the capital accounts only because sometimes these projects take one to two years to actually finish up, so. You know, just in case you were kind of wondering why it, it had 350,000 with zero expenses and there's nothing left, that's the reason for that. But we're hoping that a report like this just kind of gives you a better picture of where we stand throughout the year. I don't know if anyone has any questions on this, I'll be glad to answer them.
We appreciate the time you put into this and response to our interest in being, having more detail. Well, that's great. I don't see any questions.
Yes, I have.
Oh, sorry.
So in other words, things like total administration, instructional leadership, the remaining budget balance will be spent by the fact that it will be continuing payroll before you close out the year, right?
That's correct, yes.
Yeah, because this is May 31st. Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome, thank you.
So now we go to business with District Member Towns. Anybody on the regional planning board want to bring up any issues that need to be discussed tonight? Aside from these Zoom meetings that are coming up on the 28th and the 30th, if you haven't registered, please do so that, and I think that they're, they're trying to prevent Zoom bombing, so this pre-registration I think is required. And please, my feeling is that it's a time to bring questions forward, so tell your friends and neighbors and people who have questions or to get thoughtful and get their ideas together so that when it comes to the time for public comment, that they can contribute to.
Jane, can you just survey among the people here to find out if, like, are we all going on one day, shoot some of us switch?
Oh, okay, so how many are going on the 28th?
I registered for both days, just in case.
Yeah.
Good for you.
Well, I did too, because I didn't think I could go to all of either one, one of them, but now I can do the whole of the 28th, so. All right, and how many are doing the 30th? Okay, and you can't do either?
I'll try to sign up, I, I'm still a barter right now, so.
Through the 30th? I think you need to get a. In my humble opinion.
I'm going to do my best to.
Yeah.
Train attendant, I can't.
Okay.
What's the reason I'm up by myself, thank you, Art?
Yeah. What about Kara and Laura, are you able to attend either one of them?
I haven't registered, but I'll make one of the two.
Yeah, I'm looking at maybe the 30th.
That, that's the one they're trying to fill, the 28th is pretty much.
Yeah, I'll probably end up on the 30th.
I think it's much appreciated if we can have a strong showing. And any administrators who would like to get on would be wonderful because.
Yeah, I haven't registered yet, but I will get on one or both.
Yeah, yeah, and Bonnie will be at the Communications Subcommittee meeting tomorrow because I asked about the the content or the structure of these things, but it's not known yet until tomorrow.
I'm going to try to get.
And so, yeah.
The community talks are specifically to ask questions, not.
We don't know.
Statements, so we don't know if it's a comment or if it's just.
Right, we don't know the exact structure.
Because we haven't gotten it, so hopefully.
All we know is the invitation.
I think it would be, Bonnie, would you mind informing us so that we're properly prepared?
Depending on what I find out tomorrow.
Yeah. And I've started informal meetings with my community. And I'm, I'm going to be promoting discussions like at the Farm New Marrow Friday night dinners. And so I hope all of you who socialize will bring up discussions so people can be a little bit better informed. All right. Chairman's report, now in your report, are you talking about the 16th?
I, I can.
No, well, I can too.
Well, go ahead.
Okay.
I had a lot to say, but I don't have.
Yeah.
Do you want to mention all with everyone in connection with regional school district?
Okay, well, Jim is knowledgeable about this. The town of Egremont, we, the, the school district planning board is sending Lucy Praschekar and Jake Eberwine to every collect board for a report. And so that I can send you the schedule of what towns they're. It's going to be in Egremont on the 28th at 2 o'clock in the afternoon.
Not as of today.
Oh, it's changed now?
As of today, it came July 6th.
Oh, okay, all right.
Just came today, so you know, I'm going to find it, and I, did you find it?
I'll, it's, I'll get it, okay.
So I'll give you an updated list in case you want to listen in on these. In the meanwhile, the.
Cardi Sun too?
Well, some of them are in person and some are.
It says it, yes.
Hasn't been scheduled for New Marrow yet. And the last planning board meeting, members were asked to give their reasons why they were opposed to the model that was chosen and why they were supporting it. And George McGurn did not get a chance to make a statement.
New Marrow is July 14th.
Okay, so make a statement about their position. So he sent it around to everybody in Egremont, and he also sent it to the newsletter that goes to a listserv in Great Barrington. So it's about a 10-point document about.
It was from all three.
It's from all three.
Denali.
Only, yeah. As you may or may not know, this whole planning board is structured from planning committees that were created in each town. As far as I know, Egremont is the only town where the planning committee has had a conversation among themselves because the other ones were just created and then folded into the planning board. So it's interesting that, that this conversation among the three members led them to issue a statement of, of their lack of support for the current model that was being picked. I have not heard any response, I don't know how that's being handled. And if you, I have a copy of it, and so does Jim, if anybody wants to read it who isn't in Egremont or Great Barrington and received it, that, that's public at this point, so. Yeah. So it's going to be, it's going to be interesting as more and more community members get involved and more discussion happens, we'll see how it evolves because this model was voted to be researched and considered and possibly modified, so this is the period, the next step. And I think the major thing for this, these Zoom calls is for people to understand that we did not approve this model as is. And they, it's an active process of building what may or may not, what people think is the best thing for our communities. So I did want to say.
May I ask a question?
Yeah, sure.
Did this reflect a decision that came from a facilitator, like that was led by a facilitator to help come to this as a consensus in the process? Or is this just something like that was decided or advocated by the consultant and then voted?
No, the.
With the majority of the committee.
The full board had three sessions to consider this model and the other models, and then it was, a question was called at some point by Don Colburn, okay, let's vote on this now. So discussion stopped and they, the majority, except for six of us, felt they wanted to pursue further research on this model was implied, but it was not in fact in the final motion. I won't bore you, I, I'll talk to you, if anybody wants me to explain that, I can, I send it in the newspaper. So. Okay, so.
I thought the comments from the Egremont tree, I guess they get, have a name now. Were, they're really concrete, I mean, it's not like we don't like you.
No, no, they're certain.
What's the, the questions about vocational programs? You know, the research in terms of educational effectiveness.
Yeah.
Yeah. So. From what I, I haven't been following the planning board for the last however many years, however many years it's been going on, but if those questions, if those concrete questions are not satisfying our community, I don't know where we go from here.
Yes, well.
Well, I think that's one of the things about bringing up the questions, because I think that are the things that I'm finding is that this is what I get for going around different towns to, with friends to get my name on the ballot. And the thing that I've heard the most is that there's just not enough information, that's all, that's all I keep hearing. And that, until, until that information is out there, there's not going to be a lot of support either way. You know what I mean? It's just really like a serious case of WTF, so.
All right.
Obviously you guys have been in the Berkshire's way too long.
Sorry, cross talk. Sorry.
What did you just say, Jim?
I, I did cross talk and I apologize for.
He's ragging on me, he's ragging on me.
All right, so I have a couple of things in my report. First of all, I, I, I very much enjoyed the session on July 16th. It's not July, June 16th, where we got to hear more about, from the consultant who's helping our district with the early college high school. I was pleased with the assortment of people from different parts of our world who showed up. And especially, I've been in this world for so long, that some of these people I've seen for the last four years, in and out of the schools and in and out of education and still caring about what's going on. So while it was more of a kind of soft beginning, though we didn't get, we got to play a little bit with some ideas and talk to the people at our tables. I, I think it was a great start and I, I just am so tickled that we're doing this. So I keep saying, it's so great that we're doing. The, the nomination papers, I'm just reminding you that nine slots are open in November. So if you are trying to encourage people to run, that you know their nomination papers have to be picked up from Lynette and return, turn to the clerks at the various towns by July 26th. And you only need 39 signatures, so it's doable, but with, we have a little over a month for, to get people on board. So I put a, a piece in the Marrow Biblelet News, everybody. I'm still working to encourage as many people on this board to stay because we need a, we've got work that needs to get done. And the more people who have been involved, the better. And of course, since I'm not running, it's fine for me to say other people should run, but I, I feel like.
You're not running?
No, I've said this about five times.
I don't know if you're bad, this is.
No, come on, you're just not listening to me. I, I love the school district, I am going nowhere. It's just, I'm not a politician and I want to live a long and healthy life. So I am choosing to take a different role, but I'm not abandoning, just want to let you know. So it doesn't look good for me to say, Nancy, please run, when I'm saying, well, I'm not, so.
But we'll keep calling you, Jim, we're not going to stop calling you.
No, well, that's fine, and you know. No, well, that's fine, and you know, you never know how it's gonna go until we get to election, and so I'm just saying, I'm not actively taking out nominations at this point, I'm, I'm I'll say no.
There's just too much, there's just too much going on in your life at the moment, that's.
Sorry, so, wanted to say that, the other thing I wanted to investigate is, we have two meetings this summer. And I think one of them should have a fun component, children, where we actually have food and we get to have a good time and do our work, so I'm wondering if anybody else is thinking that it might be nice to do something like that within the open meeting law constrictions.
Barbecue at Mount Everett.
Well, we have, we have a barbecue, we have a lovely picnic table area, we're gonna have nice weather, and we've worked really hard, so.
And, and, and our dress code is from art, right, we all wear shorts.
We, yeah, yeah, so I'm is there anybody, uh, I'm not gonna have a motion, but I've been to work on that, I don't see objections coming here. Okay, so that is my superintendent's report.
Okay, so I um, put the report uh, in at the last minute, I don't, so there's a quiz, because it's three pages long, but I sent this out to the entire district, or version of this to the entire district, to the faculty and staff, um, and to you guys, so I'm not going to necessarily reread everything that's in here, um, it just has dates and opportunities that, um, it's not in your packet, I sent it to you. It's not in your, it's not in your packet, I sent it to you prior to your coming here, um, but it's nothing that, it's just reminders of dates, you can look at it, it'll be posted online tomorrow. As Jane said, um, we had, I, I did put in here, um, in your report, and that'll be online, the registration link to the twentieth and the thirtieth for everybody who might need that, so I sent that district-wide. Um, I, I talked about, um, the early college visioning project, and we have created an early college page on the district website, so I put the link in there, so people can go look at that, that's where I'm gonna put, we're all gonna put the materials that like from the first session, we have the PowerPoint up, um, we have um, pictures, so you can see your life in photos for those who are there. Um, and we did have approximately forty people who were there. Uh, we also have picked the next four dates, so I, I put them in here, so that people know and can plan ahead of time. They are gonna, I didn't put that in this note, but they are gonna alternate, starting um, with us uh, here at Mount Everett on August twenty-fourth. The one in October will be at Simon's Rock, and we'll just keep doing that, so they're all scheduled, and um, agendas and planning will, you know, will be updated throughout. So um, that's what I put in here, I did wanna just talk about um, one other issue, which was, has to do with an incident that was reported to a school committee member of a concern, um, a family's about flyer distribution in the district for events that are not sponsored or particularly endorsed it from outside community groups. And um, we did some research, we have a policy, we have a school committee policy in place that is has been very effective and very thorough for uh, my time. The, we did have a flyer that was approved for a particular community event, and um, there was also another flyer that went out um, for the same community event, which was not seen by my office, um, however, it did have our disclaimer, so I'm going to own it. And, um, but um, I checked with legal counsel, I reviewed the policy, I'm making the recommendation that we direct this to policy, just take a look and see if the committee is satisfied with the process that we've had in place, if anybody wants to make any changes to it. I personally will just say I haven't received any complaints or concerns, but I've been made aware of um, the situation. And so I just think that would be the best course of from here, so, uh, we can, we can go from there. The last thing I wanna say is, I just wanna say thank you to this school committee for all your support and throughout this year and the collaboration that we've had, I think, um, this place, uh, this district wouldn't be the special place it is without all of you, so I just wanna take this opportunity to say that.
Can we comment a little about how the last day went?
The last day went?
Of, of, you know, kids, teachers.
It was a great day, it's been a great, um, there's been a lot of great days lately, and uh, with lots of activities going on. Uh, every one of us was out at the buses, um, doing the waves, uh, yeah, and uh, uh, kids were very excited and, um, you know, happy to, to be on their way home, actually, you know, a lot of them, it took a really long time to dismiss, they were commenting, I said, you guys really wanna stay? You know, and then it seemed to be rushing out the door, as fast as we thought they were going to, but um, I, I think it was a great day, we, there was a, there was a school sing today. There was, there's been really fun activities all week long, so, um, I don't know if anybody else has anything that I missed, but everybody, it's it flew by, even though it didn't feel like it, because it, as I said, you know, some days we sleep in our clothes, but, um, you know, they, it, it really flew by, I can't believe that today was the day, the last day of school, you know.
I, I just wanna commend the staff, like, so, I was at South Egremont School graduation, which was the community that was built there was amazing, and it was great to see the turnout, but, um, my kid, he was a little apprehensive of ascending into third grade at New Marlborough. Today, because they had a weird situation with boiler earlier this year, so they got up today. And she got to go visit uh, Mr. Masters for next year, and uh, I think the, the thoughtfulness that you guys realize that these are even the little ones are people, you know, and that little thing gave her so much energy looking forward to next year, and it's like little details, I think you and Jesse and Charles and everybody who's in the administration, like, you guys really looked at the whole kids, I think you looked at the, uh, the administration really looked earnestly at like staff and faculty, um, and I, I just, I really appreciate everything that you guys have done, and I see it with my kids coming home. Jazz at the end of the school year, not exhausted, so.
That's the best thing in here.
Yeah, yes, those are my favorites, actually, yeah.
One of our littlest people that's in pre-K, um, one of our faculty members told me today that when he realized, like, wait, is that kind of not gonna see you? It was just so cute, and she said, he just hugged me, hugged me, hugged me. I wanna come to school every day.
That's so great.
There were like ten, there were like ten PA announcements to tell the kids to get to the buses.
They were not leaving.
It was very slow.
And you noticed that this administrative staff were like, well, we love you.
What was very interesting was on, like, the national news last night, had a panel of teachers talking about how difficult this year was, and you realize all over the country, you know, we're not over the pandemic, and people are so exhausted, that you could really see our staff for the greatest part, just really being there for our kids, and really, I have to give you some, definitely some kudos there, is the sensitivity to the needs of our children, because even, and so I didn't think would be as affected or affected.
Alright. Madame Director of Students.
Alright, so it is the last day of school, and everybody was excited, but all I was thinking about was next year, and everything to get done this summer, so um I do have a report that did not get to you that will be posted online tomorrow, so, um, but in it, I just pointed out to you that professional development is always planned a year in advance, so, as Beth um, alluded to before, I have booked everything, so, um, we have a, a lot of great contracted coaches and presenters coming in next year. Universal Design for Learning, Responsive Classroom, Math, um, Reading, we're doing it all. We're going big, um, and then over the summer, we have a time going on, so, we have thirty um, staff members who are gonna be participating in a youth mental health institute that's being put on by Dr. Steve Hoff. And um, Sandy wrote a grant that we got, and she's able to pay him to do this through that grant. And the, the overwhelming feedback from staff, they're just so appreciative, excited, um, really looking forward to it, he's gonna do a nice balance between talking about their personal self-care, as well as how to support students. So that's gonna be a exciting time, we also have teachers coming in by curriculum, we have teachers that are gonna be doing um, online professional development during the summer, so just, you know, it's the last day of school, but there's a whole lot going on. So then, I promised that I would show some data tonight, and so um Chris is going to put it up in PowerPoint. Uh, so the data that I'm gonna be presenting to you tonight is focused on math and reading. And it's, you know, at the high district level, I didn't get down into the granulars of it. And of course, this is new dated too, so I've only had so much time to actually analyze it, some of it was just completed yesterday, so.
No pressure.
Um, you can go to the next slide, thanks. So just a reminder to everyone that the assessments that we're using in the district is FastBridge is what we're using K to twelve. And the FastBridge provides us with an assessment three times a year for ELA, math, and mental health. I'm only gonna be talking about the academic piece. Um, we have the iReady math program that we implemented this year for the first year in K to eight. And we use that benchmark three times a year, we look at that predominantly for K through eight for math over the FastBridge. Whereas the FastBridge math, we look at for nine through twelve, because that's the only benchmark data I have for math for those age groups. But we make sure we test the FastBridge across the district, so that we still have that constant variable to look at, kids' growth over a long term.
Just because I'm processing a little slower, will this be, deck be posted?
Yes, it will be, with my report, you will have access to all of this. And I will be available for questions that come up in your head down the road. So, that's, those are the assess, the big assessments we're currently using, okay, so here is, I'm starting with the FastBridge data. This is our district-wide reading, K through twelve for this school year, so the first bar is fall, metal is winter, the one to the right is spring. Anything above the black line is on or above grade level. Anything below the black line is below grade level in varying degrees. So, a general rule of thumb, when we consider how strong our curriculum is and our instruction is, is that if we have a strong tier one, which means what happens in the classroom every single day, eighty percent of our students should be on or above grade level. And I'll just say that I have never seen that happen anywhere that I've worked, but that's the goal, okay? So, to me, when you see district-wide coming off of a pandemic, over sixty percent of our students being on or above grade level, that's a win. So, you know, I'm sure that, you know, you first see it, if I wasn't narrating, you'd be going, well, that looks pretty static and not too exciting. But if you think about it from that lens, it's a really great place to start when we have, knock on wood, next year being some normalcy, and um now that we have a lot of benchmarks in place and progress monitoring to really help us grow what we have.
How does that relate to the fact, you know, when it was the MCAS, we were always that number one? Is there any relationship between?
It actually correlates very well with MCAS, so um, I don't know what you mean by number one, because the data I've looked at, we've never been number one.
No, no, it's number one in, like, in terms of number of students who, quote-unquote, passed the test in tenth grade. So like, we had, you know, there were years in math, if you didn't look at the percentile, just the fact that all the kids were needs improvement or better, meaning that they qualified for the PLAW.
Oh, okay, yeah, so.
Some years, twenty-five districts that were tied for, for being first.
Okay, so a kid getting needs improvement on the MCAS would be below the black line on this, so we wouldn't consider them in the positive, like he's saying, this was.
The new system in MCAS, right, you have partially being, which doesn't really qualify, except in the graduation requirement.
Yes.
Um, just so I'm clear, we took three assessments, and I'm assuming the grade level assessment is for what's expected at the first uh, trimester, second trimester, third trimester, so it's not like for a year-long standard, it's, it's intervals, it's benchmarks for each grade, okay?
Right.
And so the indication that the students, that even with all the stressors of the year, that you, the students who were above the grade level stayed at grade level.
Right, right, it's not that they didn't make growth, because the expectation of them grew, but it was that they were able to keep up.
Yeah.
Regardless.
Okay, nice job.
Okay, so any other questions on that slide?
Yeah.
Is the needs impro, oh, granted, we did not have that.
Right.
So, you can't call that correlation. I was just curious how much of that pink would be NCAS level, just.
And so, you know, when we have, so, last year, when I had this data and I looked at our MCAS data, which was hard, because it wasn't a full MCAS, right, it was just a partial, but there was a direct correlation between this data and the MCAS, this year we'll get more information, because we're gonna have full MCAS results. And so, the more years go by, the better we'll be able to judge.
And the MCAS reports out in the late summer, right?
Well, we don't have final.
After all, they give us raw scores.
Yeah.
But they don't give us final things till like September.
Right, October.
It's, I remember.
Long time after your.
Yeah, so i- if our November school committee meeting, I'll probably be able to really give you a good analysis of that. Which is why this is so important, because the MCAS data is, you know, a day late and a dollar short. So it's really important that we have benchmarks that we can see in real time, that do give us a good forecast to how kids are gonna do. Alright. So, next, this is the one place where I broke down by grade level, um, and only because there was no way for me to give you an overall for nine through twelve, so, if you wanna flip to the next one, so you have ninth grade on your left and tenth grade on your right, and this is their math, FastBridge, same progression, fall, winter, spring. So um, I went back and looked to see how had the, the same grade levels, so not the same students, but the same grade levels done last year on FastBridge, which was the first year we had done it. And so, um, last year, ninth graders in the spring, we only had sixty percent above the black line. So, to me, that's a positive, we have more kids in the spring in ninth grade.
The right is last year, and the left?
No, no, this is ninth and tenth.
Okay.
I didn't put up last year, I'm just telling you, that in the spring last year, sixty percent of the ninth graders, based on this assessment, were on or above grade level, whereas this year, seventy-three percent of the ninth graders, so that. So that, to me, says that our, our math instruction in ninth grade this year, not surprising, was stronger than it was last year. That's all it tells me.
But the tenth grade doesn't look too great.
So, I know, and Beth and I had that conversation, which is why we're gonna have to dig in, because, right, there's a million variables why that could be. So one variable that I feel quite confident, if any of the staff were in here right now, would say, is they're struggling to get buy-in from the high school students. They're struggling to get the students to take it serious and perform the best they can. And an example of that would be that seventh grade took it and it was not good. And that's me being kind. It was so not good that Jesse and I polled most of the seventh graders, anybody that we knew hadn't put in their effort into the cafeteria this week and made them retake the test. And they had scrap paper and they had to use the scrap paper. And there was this one young man who clearly was not invested in the process. And I pulled him out in the hallway and took him down to, his classroom teacher was teaching a different subject at the time. And I said, you know, he's already done, I need you to reset this. And he's like, no, but I'm done. And I said, oh, let's just see how you did. And she pulled it up, he was at a kindergarten level. I said, uh, we're gonna reset this and you're going to do it again. And he's like, well, it's just so babyish. And I said, look, it is when you start, because it starts assuming that you don't know a lot. But you have to let the computer know what you know, and then it gets harder and harder. And it will eventually give you things that you couldn't possibly stop, because that's how it narrows down what you really know. And he was like, oh, I just don't care. And I'm like, well, you're gonna care, because you're gonna keep redoing it. And, you know, this, I was not making friends. So anyway, we go back to the cafeteria, he gets back on. And after a couple minutes, I go over and I look and I go, great, this is above kindergarten. He's like, yeah, this is actually real math. I'm like, imagine that. So.
Sarcasm, sarcasm.
Yeah, well, you know, middle schoolers love sarcasm, so it was working with him. So I go away, I come back, I'm like, well, look at how challenging that is. He's like, I know. So he actually, he spent a good amount of time on it, a lot longer than a lot of the other kids. And I had heard that this was a child who was not dusted in his education. And, you know, has a difficult home life, whatever. So I go, he turns it in, and anytime the kid turned it in, we were on, like, to see if we got instant results. So that if they were still at kindergarten level, we could go, guess who gets to do it again? He was now seventh grade level. And so I go over to him and I said, I am so proud of you. In an hour and a half, you grew from kindergarten to seventh grade. And I, and you survived it, it wasn't that painful, but you know what? He was so proud. He was so proud. And I thought, yeah, you can go and, you know, say to your friends, whatever, that was stupid, whatever. But he was so proud that he could do it. I think he wasn't trying, because he didn't think he could do it.
Well, I, one of the things seventh grade, tenth grade can show in college is a lack of math confidence.
Yes.
And so for some of the kids, and I know some of those kids in tenth grade are so afraid when they start that I'm gonna fail, that they, they just start hitting the balls.
They don't even try.
And that's something that we've worked on with, over the last, you know, two years, with some of the kids who have this sort of lack of confidence. I think in the sense of, of FastBridge, it's gonna become part of the culture. So in that seventh grade class, there were ten kids, we didn't retest, who had bought into it from the start. They were like, this is important, I know this is gonna help the teacher tell me where I am. And so for those ten kids, they spent multiple classes, still. And there were other kids who just didn't buy in. I think as we go along with the next couple of years and kids are used to doing it, I think most of the kids are gonna have that attitude, like, this is important, I need to do my best so that they can tell me where I am.
We're definitely gonna get more accurate scores in the future.
Let me ask you a question, because I've gone to you with particularly the tenth grade and the issues that a couple of parents spoke to me and kids about math. Would they have difficulty, I think one of us in eighth grade, would change teachers, would whatever, they really, you know, struggling, would this, in any way, when you look at the tenth grade results, would in any way, would you be using it with their math, with the math instructors, to look at what is going on?
It has a progress monitoring part of it, that, you know, we, we dabbled in this year, because, you know, we won't use FastBridge for the last two years. And so I think as we move forward, you know, we have a plan here, professional development. Focus on progress monitoring art, where you can look at deficiencies and, you know, we tried some stuff in middle school this year, but the sixth grade math teacher, we used the high school math teacher to kind of do some interventions. Once we saw an iReady kind of where they were, that was really successful. I think we'll do more of that, and, and do more of it at the high school level, trying to group certain kids where we see certain skill deficiencies.
Yeah, I don't wanna hold, hold you up in everything with this, but when you have kids who have this attitude towards math, whether it was the teacher, whether it was whatever, it's important that, you know, we're not a school of a thousand kids in tenth grade. These kids went through with the same teacher and these, the results is that, does the test in tenth grade already relate directly to the curriculum?
In FastBridge, it is the standards and the curriculum is with the standards, but it's not attached to the curriculum in any way. Now, the curriculum that the high school math department uses, which is a high-quality curriculum, as identified by Ed Reports, was purchased a few years ago. And I found out this year that they had not been given training on the online component of the program, which offers some things similar to what we have with iReady. So we are getting them the training, so that they will have that as a resource as well.
They, they meaning the teachers.
Correct, the, correct, the teachers. So for example, with, and, and this is why we use iReady in the younger grades for more of our day-to-day progress monitoring instruction. And HMH, I found out, offers it as well for our high school courses. And so they will be able to, once they get the training, which we're trying to figure out if we can get it in the summer, or if it's something we're gonna have to squeeze in at the beginning of the year. But it will give them progress monitoring specifically to take your, your algebra class, right? And here will be progress monitoring of, here are the standards they need to be learning, and what skills are they lacking to help them access those standards? So I think that, once we get that to them, that will support them a lot in better understanding how to fill in gaps, so that the kids can access the standards of that particular math course. But that's just something that high school teachers historically haven't had to do, right? This is a whole new game with kids coming up with gaps that historically, high school teachers weren't used to dealing with. They were used to, this is my coursework and this is what I teach and you come to me ready. And so I think it's a whole new game for teachers at the high school level.
I, I don't wanna take this on, so I'll speak to you off.
Sure, yeah, yeah, I think that this is obviously fertile ground for more discussion. And. And you are always welcome.
Yeah, we do have.
We have to get through this. So, so we'll just skip through real quickly, on the next slide, you see the eleventh and twelfth grade growth. And I just wanna say, it's not that everybody failed the third test in twelfth grade, that's what Beth saw. We don't have them take it when they're graduating.
I don't like to see the red lines.
Yeah, she was like, we're not trying that. I'm like, no, 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 we don't, you know, a week before graduation, we don't go, hey, by the way. Well, we could try, but I don't think we'd get a lot of buy-in there, so we just don't. We just don't try.
Well, I just wanna say, one of the reasons why we didn't force it on, was this was the last graduate class that didn't need four years of math. So we had some kids who were not in math class, and that's where we gave FastBridge, ELA and English. So, yeah, so when, we had some, you know, whatever, what's the number of kids who were in math class? It was gonna be real challenging to get that to buy into.
I do think that we will eventually get there, because it will no longer be a big deal to do it. Yes, Art?
I, I think that, I think that's part of the other problem, is the buy-in. The kids really are having issues taking all the MCAS, this, all the different testing that goes on over the year. But as the year goes on, it's already in the beginning, but they're tired of it. And I, I don't, I think somehow we need to work on that aspect of it.
Well, these aren't long assessments.
They're not, I, I know. And tenth grade's really the only one that does a lot of MCAS testing and then does FastBridge. When you talk about the freshmen and the, you know, the juniors, juniors aren't taking any MCAS, freshmen only.
Right, I know, but. On all the testing, I've heard kids say that, we're just done with it.
Well, they have to be assessed, so that we can adjust.
To get accurate tests, I think you need to work on, I mean, and just started this, so the more it's done.
We're gonna build up their stamina.
Yeah.
While they're in, they're interested in knowing how well they're doing.
I'm gonna say also too, for those of us who then had to work with these students, particularly as more and more college becomes, or undergraduate work becomes asynchronous learning. This is a skill that it's, it's not second nature and it's a bear to, which change? It's a bear to learn how to do it. And I will tell you that the students who we get, who are used to that, not so much just the constant testing, but the self-evaluation, they do really well. And the students that are not, they feel like they're failing all the time. And it's a really question of teaching them the skill set. And this is what, it seems to me, that this is what the FastBridge, et cetera, is of supply. So I, I tell you from my end, and if my end is big, and it's, which, tomorrow's my last day. Great, it's going Saturday, I'm on return, I'm gonna cry. No, I think this is pretty great, I've turned to bear for the kids' education standpoint, where education has gone further.
I will not phrase it as a long question.
Uh, please, because I'm.
No, I am the same way.
We have some really important stuff here.
Understood. And I think this is actually an important thing with the assessments. We're talking about just in time teaching for kids who are from below level. Out of concern of kids who are performing above level, and the disparity, no, but like, just the bandwidth of the teachers now covering a huge scam. Is there a way of identity, identifying if there's kids performing way above grade level? And does that, is that informing curriculum decisions for the future in terms of additional course offerings? I know that we want inclusive classrooms, but we also don't want kids who are very, with a lot of aptitude in math to get bored and then suddenly check out of school. You don't have to answer that now, it's more of a question for thought. I'd be remiss if I didn't.
We have lots of answers.
Yeah, I have an answer, but I'll answer it later.
Right, but before you, I just have a very quick.
I'm, I'm gonna put a hold on this, because we have important business.
I just want, summer school, 'cause I got a Facebook message and nobody's got the answer. Can kids still register elementary, middle school?
And we start, it's, it's, I will say that it's, we're at the final hour. It starts on Monday.
Start Monday.
Okay, is that elementary and middle?
Yes.
Yeah.
To, I mean, to respond, to whom should I tell this parent? I don't know.
I put it, I sent it out, just so you know, I sent it today to all elementary.
Elementary, contact me.
And what, what'd you say?
Elementary, contact me.
Okay, thank you, Will.
All right, last slide. So this is what I'm excited about. So this is our iReady math data. On the top is the fall and on the bottom is the spring. And I'm sorry, I couldn't make them the same length, but you get the idea. So green represents on or above grade level, yellow is one grade below, red is two or more grades below. So as you can see, we have made a lot of growth this year, K to eight. And the growth is even more staggering in some of the individual grade levels, right? Clearly, this is everything factored together. Our growth from the fall to the spring in green was thirty-eight percent. And our decrease in the red from the fall to the spring was twenty-two percent. These are amazing, amazing numbers. And for me, the fact that the yellow shrunk from fall to spring is huge. But to me, again, coming out of a pandemic, to have kids a year below grade level, that's a win. That's a huge win, right? So to me, anybody who's not in the red, I'm celebrating. So that means you have this very, very small percentage of students K through eight that are real concerned. And to me, that says, this tier one instruction is working, because we have eighty percent of the kids being successful. So, yeah, well, it kinda cut off. Yeah, but anyway, so that is my data report. I have loads of data in my office. Oh, I did have one more slide, didn't I? Oh, that's right. So this is essential to our goal of accelerated student learning on both ends of the spectrum. And in my office, I have data walls and I'm happy to talk data anytime anybody wants to come. And as the summer goes on, I'll probably even have more to say, because I have more time to analyze.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you for being excited about it.
Sandy, you're getting ready to open summer school.
Oh, gosh, there's so much going on. I just, it's, I'm really thinking about next year, but right now, there's a lot happening. Our pre-kindergarten and kindergarten screenings are hap, happened today and tomorrow. Lots of, it's great to see all the children that are coming in. I believe they have, I don't know, seventy children that they're screening over the next couple of days. And we currently have sixty-four children registered for pre-kindergarten for next year. Just a little nugget about that, since we were talking about data. Part of the screening for the kindergartners is a dyslexia screening. And we conduct assessments to see where they're at, with their early literacy and early numeracy skills. And then we analyze that data, place the children in appropriate groupings and provide interventions right off the bat. So that's happening. Summer program, as we were just talking about, this app starts Monday. So there's a, there's just a lot going on right this very moment, which is exciting, and thinking about what the kids are gonna be doing, not only academically, but socially over the next few weeks. And we're working closely with Flying Cloud, who has an afternoon program happening for our children in grades K through five, that will be running after the academic program in the morning, and we're providing lunch and transportation. So a lot of moving parts right now, and people contacting us at the very last minute. But we wanna make sure we get on everybody in who we can. And then we're looking toward next year. So I have much more to say, but I know you have an agenda and I have some data that I'll provide sometime soon regarding the mental health screenings and the information that we found through that and some proposed ideas that we'll be sharing with admin first and then with the whole school committee going forward. And the warm line is continuing through the entire summer.
That's.
How many kids do you anticipate being in the K five program?
In the K five program, right now, I think we have thirty-two that are scheduled to come. I'll see what happens on Monday and probably report to you forty-six. But right now, as of this moment, that's who we have to estimate.
I was speaking to a select board member from UMAHRA today, knew nothing about the warm line. I was explaining this, and can you send me the original? I was explaining this and can you send me the original poster again? So that I can forward it to her and she said she's gonna show it along.
I will look at it while we're sitting here.
It's on the website.
Everybody, I am telling people now, this could be a weekly counseling session if you need it. I mean, if you schedule something and call on a Tuesday, you can call every Tuesday and speak to one of our counselors. I hope that they, people will really utilize it. And we met yesterday and all of the mental health professionals agreed that everybody's taking a week or two, two weeks during the summer. And they're gonna be running that all summer long.
It might be a good idea to send the link so that it's easy for her to send on to others as well.
I'll send it.
Well, that's what I, that's what we.
I'll do it right now.
Yeah, thank you. Well, right now I'm looking for that air. So I can tell.
Get them in touch with us. We'll make it happen.
Definitely. She was so ready.
Tomorrow will be great.
Sandy, I just want you to know that we are very interested in everything you have to offer us, but.
I know.
We don't want to shortchange.
Thank you.
All right, so we're going on to new business. I'm glad Dennis suggested we put this on the agenda because it's really important to clarify for new members the value of this joint conference in Hyannis. For, you can come for one, two or three days. It's fully paid for by the district. And it's fun to be able to meet other people, to get yourself some information to empower you to do the best job that you can do. And I think that when I was first elected, I took somebody's slot who had been retiring. So I think somebody should enroll me and whoever is the other New Marlboro person can step in. And.
Yeah, no, I'm already signed up.
Yeah, well, I'm just saying that.
I think it looks fabulous.
It is, if some people are unable to do that, I'm not sure whether they're gonna have any online options, whether it's gonna be hybrid or only in person, but we can find out a little bit more about that. And then.
I don't know. I think it might be in person.
It is in person, but I'm wondering.
It will be the old way.
I think it's, I think it's totally.
Yeah, okay, all right, well. It is possible to go for a day or two.
Right, but if you could just, Lynette makes all the arrangements. So just contact Lynette and she will do, she'll take care of it. So you don't have to say, just directly contact her and she'll put together the list and then sign people up.
Yeah, I also want to say that I think there's a mid-July cutoff for early registration that saves the district a couple hundred dollars. So. Oh, okay, so I would highly recommend it and that just bring it to your attention. Now we're going on to the calendar for next year. For the school committee meetings and I think we have to approve it. So I'll just take a motion for, to approve the school committee meeting calendar.
So.
Second.
A second from Art. Is there any discussion?
Question?
Yeah.
Still gonna be hybrid?
Well, we, we're gonna be discussing, that's an item on the agenda, remote participation is the last.
Okay.
There, so we'll talk about that. So any, is there any, any Jewish holidays or other things that are conflicting?
The big ones.
I think we're past that. It's just not very high.
Okay.
No, it's.
So should we vote to approve this?
I want to check one last thing.
It basically mirrors what we've been doing. And there are certain things that can't move based on regional brackets for the budget. So those are, those are also counted out, but.
Okay.
Other than that, we can, you know, make, make adjustments, but this is basically, that's how it's, not set up right now.
All right, you okay, Bonnie? Okay, so I'm going down the line, Art?
Yes.
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Kara?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
And Jane? Yes, okay. And the next item of new business, put back to the agenda, is the approval of the Unit D settlement agreement effective August. First, do I have a motion?
I move to approve the collective bargaining agreement.
Second.
Second with Bonnie. Any further discussion? Right, we will vote on Unit D. Art?
abstain.
Oh, right. Jeff?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Kara?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Jane? Yes. And thanks to the negotiations subcommittee and our superintendent for persevering to get a really wonderful new agreement with Unit D. So now we're going on to one of our most important duties of the year. And that is the superintendent evaluation. That's, this is the way we ensure that high quality continues in the district. And I think you received it last night, which is a little, because of.
No, early this morning.
Early this morning, okay. Our, it's been a, as we know, it's been a jam-packed schedule. I'm trying to get this done in a timely manner. But we did not get it to you forty-eight hours in advance the way we might have wanted to. So I want to thank Bonnie and Jim and myself in the background. And I appreciate that Jeff is serving on the subcommittee, but is not able to attend usually.
I'm so sorry.
It's all right, it's all right. We got the business done. And we, I'm not sure how you feel about approving it if you haven't read, so. Everybody's read it? Well, I'll take a motion to approve.
So move.
Second.
All right, is there any further discussion before the vote? All right.
And I did not receive ever since now any comments, mistakes or anything. So if you sent it to me, I didn't get it.
Yeah, I just. My entire tenure on school committee has been very challenging. And I think Dr. Rakevudo has been culmination of four years on the school committee. This really was an extraordinary year. And the amount of growth that she's done, investing in herself, that's benefiting our community with her doctor education. I, I mean, my gratitude is new to that, so I really appreciate your leadership.
All right, let's, let's vote for this exemplary evaluation of an exemplary leader. Art?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Kara?
Yes.
Nancy? So yes, then Jane, yes, okay. So. The next item is related to this exemplary performance and the challenges that we have going ahead. Next year would be Dr. Rakevudo's last year on her current contract. And I'm praying for the committee to consider extending her contract or renegotiating because we don't want to lose her. We have the early college initiative, we have the regional school district planning board. We have so many initiatives that we need her to help us continue. And so I'd like to have a motion to go into negotiations with Dr. Rakevudo.
Second.
Okay, so. And I would like, so in the discussion part, I don't know whether we want to determine tonight who, how these negotiations will go. Because our last negotiation, we didn't have a unified committee. And I chose to have the entire committee negotiate with her so we could all get to know her. And there's a trust built up because we all participated. I'm thinking that's not necessary at this time. And I'm gonna suggest that the superintendent evaluation subcommittee work with her on this process, that they'll receive her, her, her ask. And we will communicate it and discuss it with the full committee once we've started that.
Would you mind telling us who's on that?
That, that's Jim, Jeff. Jim, Jeff, Bonnie and myself.
Okay.
So that's the suggestion. I'd like to pull that, add that to the, should that be a second motion perhaps or?
You need just a motion that you refer the negotiations to the superintendent.
Right, okay.
Point of order, could we?
Yeah.
Vote on the first one and then.
Right, I was trying to make them one, but let's do one. So we're, the motion that we, is on the floor, is to enter into negotiations with Dr. Rakevudo for an extension of the contract for up to three years. All right, and we have a second on that, so Art?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Kara?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Jane? Yes, okay.
I move to refer negotiation to the superintendent evaluation subcommittee.
Second.
Okay, is there any further discussion on that?
Good idea.
All right. Ready to vote? Okay, Art? Jeff?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Kara?
Yes.
Nancy? And Jane, well, I, I hope this shows you how much we appreciate you.
Sure does.
And we want to put a ball and chain on you so you're not going anywhere because we have a very desirable person here and there's plenty of openings that she could take. So let's make it fun for her, okay?
I'm a little nervous about the evaluation. We'll convince some other district to take her.
Yeah.
I know, there's a little part of me that's going.
All right, so now we are onto this issue of remote participation. And we received a notification from the state about the sunsetting of the remote participation. And it's in your packet that on January July fifteenth, the law expires. But once the extension expires, the current statute allows forty-nine percent of the board, the committee, to meet remotely, along with a hundred percent of the staff and public. The in-person, the person chairing the meeting has to be in person along with the majority of the board. So in answer to Nancy's question, if she needs to be out of town for an extended amount of time, as long as at least, well, I think we have to have six people because. In, in their seats and including the chair. Because it says forty-nine percent not be there, so that means fifty-one percent have to be there. We don't have slices of people.
Six people at three present.
Right, right.
Unless it's less than four, like unless it's less than four. Yeah.
So I'll do apologies, it's just a, you know, one thing, I could, normally I could say I can make it back, but various, various schedules are appalling.
No, no, I, I think this is a nice transition. We have gotten a lot of good attendance recently. And when people can't come, they have the option of not being here. And if we do need, especially for parents of children, we need to have the option of them being able to participate without being here. So I, I think there is a possibility that there'll be a further extension, but this, I think we can rely on the statement that I just made.
I, I, I almost wonder if we should add a standing board agenda item of the upcoming meeting and making sure people are.
Oh, I see, so now.
That there's planning and.
Right, okay, so our next meeting is the twenty-first, which would be in that category. Do we have six people who can be here on the twenty-first in person?
To July, right?
Yeah, right.
Cause we can't go back in time, right?
So I think I'll do it more directly. Is there, who will not be able to be here in person that they know for sure right now on the twenty-first?
That cannot be here?
Yeah.
Potentially me.
Okay, so we can, we can have up to four people not here and still be fine. So that gives other people an opportunity to be, have on what they need to, or if they're on vacation and they can't participate, we'll still be able to go ahead. We're okay, we're good, we're good. We're so good, I would say.
But maybe in the next agenda, we'll have like you, just so we're checking when we move on to the summer. The August meeting.
Right, right, we'll do that every meeting.
Yeah, as long as there's a standing.
Oh, a standing item, check attendance?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
May I make a motion or no?
I think the note taker will put that, will it be in the minutes?
I think it ensures it's in the minutes.
All right, go ahead.
And I make a motion that we make a standing agenda item to discuss the next meeting's in-person attendance.
Okay, so that's Jeff.
I think Laura was gonna raise her hand.
Yeah, I just, I, I might, I might have missed something in there, but independently of law stuff, state law, can't we just decide that hybrid is, is something that works for us and just lock it, lock it and load it?
Well, I think we, we cannot say, according to the way this is written, we're not entitled to have more than four people not here to have it be a legitimate meeting.
Okay, I, okay, I, I read through, but I, okay.
So the idea is that as long as the majority of the members, which for us has to be six, are in person, we can have four people not there and the public doesn't have to be here, nor do any of the administrators. It's only the elected members of the committee.
Okay, got it.
I don't think, but again, Smitty's letter to us implies that maybe they will keep it looser and this will not be true. So tune in on the twenty-first and we might have something else to say. Okay, so let's see.
We need to take a vote on the line item.
Oh, okay, yes, so, sorry. You all know your positions here, Art?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Kara?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
And Jane, so that's. Yes. A remote meeting. Okay, so now on this list of subcommittees, I have lost track of who's, or who's met and who hasn't. So if you. So if you, raise your hand if you have subcommittee report and I'll recognize you. There is Bonnie.
Okay. Personnel and negotiations that and approved a zillion sets of minutes from executive sessions. I'm looking at you, Jeff. Are you still in charge?
Yeah.
Of that committee?
Yeah, we gotta do some.
So, yeah.
But that will be on our late July agenda.
So that was done. We also passed a motion authorizing the superintendent to enter into negotiations for a possible MOA with the SB REA regarding possible schedule issues due to our partnership with Simon Drak.
Oh. Okay. Great.
And as Beth informed me, unfortunately, our attorney has COVID, so he, we don't have something that to speak to.
But the SB REA was, was.
Was reset. So that's great.
Okay.
One other thing, I, I just, sorry to interrupt, but I, we did say, and I didn't get to tell Danell or remind Danell about Laura's here too, is we did say that we were gonna do three community newsletters.
Right.
And so we were going to do one. I just want to say that, you know, we might want to work on one for July now that school's out with, you know. We have one more to do. So we're gonna have to get that on the schedule.
Drilled.
I know, I knew I was gonna be pumped. I thought you were gonna be really excited, so.
So we're hoping for a possible meeting between now and the before the twenty-first, possibly.
Can't believe I can't find her parents. Well, hopefully she got information of somebody.
Since I was in the executive committee.
Yeah.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
Um, who's on my committee again?
I am.
Which one?
Executive Minutes Review. It's, it's Jane and.
Dennis and I.
I think it's you and Dennis.
Okay.
Yeah, on Executive Minutes Review.
It's the three, I think it's the three.
I think it is a year, but I'll double check.
That's who was last year, so I'm, and I don't.
The last year I did it, but I'm not on it now.
Okay.
So just to let you guys know, July's gonna be very difficult for me to schedule the meeting. So it might be early August that we have that. Or it won't be before the July twenty-first.
Okay.
Works for me.
Don't want to get in the way for someone.
Okay. All right. So we're come to future agenda items. Besides a barbecue.
Disappointing.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right. Art is adjourned. Art?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Uh, Laura?
Yes.
You did, okay, Bonnie?
Yes.
Kara?
Yes.
Nancy?
Whenever you're speaking from your folder.
Yes.
And that means the same people.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.